Mayor of the City, Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council to hereby proclaim August 31st, 2024 as Overdose Awareness Day in the City of Lacey. And encourage anyone whose life has been impacted by a substance use disorder to call the Washington Recovery Helpline at, again, 1-866-789-1511. Signed by myself this day, August 6th. And before I bring it up to accept this overdose awareness proclamation, I just want to say this is very timely for myself and for my family. We have someone that's been a loved one in our household for a long time. Just found out that there was an overdose and she passed away. And it's been understandably a very difficult time for our family and friends and everyone who knew this person. And I just want to, you know, I'm just, reach out to everyone who's been affected like our families have been affected and know how difficult this is. It seems like everyone knows someone who's had an overdose. And hopefully they have survived unlike our friend. And so I just want to know that we're thinking about you and we're hoping you all receive the help you can get. Call the hotline and think about your loved ones. And this is an epidemic that has touched everyone, all, everyone. And it's just, it's really hard. And I know everyone understands that as well. So to accept this, we have Katie Strozick. Come up and accept this.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Katie Strozick. I'm the opioid response coordinator at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. First, I want to say thank you to City of Lacey for once again doing this proclamation. I believe it's the third year now that City of Lacey has done this. And I really think that it shows the dedication that this jurisdiction has to addressing the opioid epidemic and making it a priority to addressing it in our community. International Overdose Awareness Day is on August 31st every year. And again, it's an international event, so it's not just here locally, it's all across the world. International Overdose Awareness Day is really meant to remember those who have been lost to a fatal drug overdose, to celebrate those who have responded to a drug overdose with naloxone and hopefully prevented that overdose from becoming fatal, as well as reduce stigma around drug overdose and drug use in general. These efforts for overdose awareness day locally tied to our Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force, which is open to the public and open for any jurisdiction to take part of. We have four action areas within the Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force and our response plan, including prevention, treatment, overdose, and pregnant and parenting populations. International Overdose Awareness Day is special to me, not just because I've worked in this field for almost 10 years, but I also have lost many friends to an overdose. I have many friends who are still here who have survived an overdose, and I've reversed an overdose for a loved one as well. We have three events for International Overdose Awareness Day in our community this year. The first one is going to be in Yelm this Saturday at Yelm Skate Park from 12 to 5:00. The next one we have is specific to pregnant and parenting and family populations, and that one will be on August 23rd from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Harbor House Downtown Olympia, kind of by the water. And then we have our large event at the end of the month on August 30th at Heritage Park down by, or down in Olympia by the lake. There will be a resource fair from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and then a memorial walk as well from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on our approved agenda is public comment and public hearing policy update, Resolution 1150. Shannon.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. We have been talking about public comment and public hearing policies for a while, so I am not going to give the full presentation that I have given in the past, but I do want to make note for anybody who might be watching or listening here tonight that the council has reviewed this on a number of occasions, most recently at the July 23rd council meeting, where they provided some pretty definitive direction to staff on what they were looking for within this policy. So the recommendation tonight is to motion to adopt Resolution 1150, which would update the Lacey City Council Policy and Procedures Manual. And then a second action would be to adopt Resolution 1151, which would update the Advisory Board Handbook. And both of these updates would add and change a public comment and public hearing policies. Just really briefly, what you'll find in the city council public comment policies in the policy handbook, number one is that it allows for in-person unregistered public commenters. Two, that it does not allow for remote unregistered commenters. It also removes the ability to limit the total amount of time dedicated to a specific issue, and this was discussed at the last meeting. It adds language on muting and a verbal reminder from the presiding officer when public comment periods have gone over the three-minute allotted time. It also adds language on muting and reminding, a verbal reminder for remote attendees as well as in-person. And then it will also add the addition of a visible timer. For work sessions specifically, that was for our regular meetings, what it, the language does is it adds a verbal public comment period to work sessions. And the way that it's currently drafted is that the public comment period would come at the end of the meeting. There was some discussion between council members about having individuals, you know, hear what was going on during the work session and then providing comments. However, if the council would like this to be at the beginning of the meeting, we can certainly, the council could certainly amend the motion to move it forward before the other agenda items for the council policies and procedures. Notably, what the resolution does state is that these would become effective in September 2nd, 2024, so they wouldn't be effective immediately, but would start at the beginning of the next month. So once again, the recommendation is to move forward with adopting both resolutions. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Yeah, let's ask some questions first, because I have a question.
So you need two separate motions, I assume, right?
Correct.
Do you want me to get a motion on the floor first? And then?
Yeah, go ahead and we, well.
Because I'm going to make an amended, it's going to, I'm going to.
Yeah. Let's have, yeah, let's do questions first, because how I foresee it during work sessions, I know there's been some discussion that goes back and forth, is, you know, the reason why we want to bring it forward is because during an agenda item of, that could be specifically where we want, you know, we'd like some public input, that is the very few times that, you know, we've sort of accepted it. And I think what would be appropriate is anytime the council has a majority vote to accept public comment during a work session, that's when it should be allowed, right? And so if there is, if the council seems like it's an appropriate time for a public comment on a specific issue, I think they should build a vote and allow public comment. And so I guess in that circumstances, it wouldn't allow, it wouldn't necessarily be every work session, but, which is, I know, a little bit different than what we've done it. But, you know, at any point, this council could overturn any of our sort of normal outstanding rules with a majority of vote. And so it makes almost more sense to either not include it, the more I've thought about it, or with a majority of vote to be able to include it. So that's where my head's at, because I don't know, you could do it at the beginning, which probably makes a little more sense, but sometimes we don't know unless we're get into something, because it's, as we know, a work session is considerably, it's more laid back, we're having a general conversation, we're talking about a policy, and then every once in a while, very, very, very rarely, there is a situation where someone in the audience can add something specific to that conversation. And so that's what we've been wrestling with, of, in what circumstance is acceptable to put that into a policy that makes sense for everyone? And so, anyway, that's my thoughts. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Greenstein and see what his thoughts are.
So I don't disagree with the concept of what you're saying. I think the problem with that is it's not consistent, right? And it doesn't let the public know that we are accepting public comment. So even then, if we decide to accept it, the people that have the opportunity are limited to who happens to be there at the meeting, which I see as a problem for consistency. So what I think, the only change I would like, and we had a pretty deep discussion about this at the last meeting, my recommendation would be just to move it to the beginning rather than the end, but I think we should have it at all meetings. That's my personal.
I agree.
So at the beginning and not the end?
And my reason for the beginning is just that if people come, they don't have to stay till the end of our meeting, right? They, just like we do here, we do it at the beginning so that those who want to leave can.
Yeah. I think it definitely makes more sense. What I was sort of looking at is like, you know, it's so rare that we ever do this, and so it just makes sense that if we were going to do it, it should take a majority vote, and this council can do whatever they want with a majority vote. But we should put it in the rules that it needs to be a majority vote. And from practice is if anyone wants to come and talk to us for any reason, I guess what we can, you know?
We're going to say no?
We've never said no, and we're never going to say no. If you want, if the people want to come talk to the council, we're never going to say no. And so I guess it's better to, but we even put in public comment at the beginning of normal public comment, that's not when we use it in work sessions.
I agree.
Where we've used it in work sessions is when we're having a conversation and we're like, I just don't know about this, and someone goes, well, I have something I want to, you know, I could offer, you know? I don't know, so I'm not sure if we're getting at what we're truly want to do with this.
I think Dave, that's some comment.
I know.
I see you grabbing the mic.
And then I'll, I'll always go legal first, and then I'll go to Councilmember Dunn.
I would just offer a comment, that there appear to be, there's two different issues going on here. One is whether the council wants to address or offer public comment at work sessions in an oral fashion, which is something the council's never done before. That would be very consistent with current practice at a regular council meeting like tonight, where the public can comment on anything they wanted to, for three minutes, et cetera. And that's what's proposed with the policy changes. What the mayor is suggesting is something entirely different, which is, I think, a different discussion, and I don't know if, that discussion can certainly carry on, but it, the council can take action on the policy before it tonight without resolving your question.
Okay. Then that's what we should do. Let's go with Councilmember Dunn, do you have a question?
Yeah, that's basically what I was going to say, from the discussion that we had, it seemed, and what Carolyn presented, is that we want to add public comment, no matter what, we just happen to be talking about that, you know, how are we going to change this policy? So that just kind of got thrown in there, but then, yeah, how do we deal with somebody who might have information that could be valuable, it's like, they're totally separate things.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I sort of brought it up, because they are totally separate things, and I just want to make sure we're still getting to what we're trying to get to. Do you have anything, Councilmember Stebbin?
Nothing on my end.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
So, you know, as I think about it, I'm thinking like, okay, if we did this at the beginning of a work session, you know, oftentimes when we do, when we do have somebody speak and the council votes, you know what, let's have this person speak because they have some valuable information, they came to the meeting, they want to say something, it's usually in a situation where it's like, hey, we're on this subject and they speak on that subject. If they're speaking prior to that subject, are they getting the full context of what we're trying to accomplish? And then if it's done at the end, then what happens, because once we get some resolution on that subject, it's oftentimes forwarded to council, we decide, okay, well, it's forwarded to council, and it goes in the way that we just finished that conversation, as opposed to something being added at the end. And now staff is going to make adjustments based on some conversation that we didn't get to add that piece into.
Yeah.
I think what we've done over the years has worked really well in that we have said, you know what, there's a person who has valuable intel that we need, it's served us well at least twice this year that I know of. And so I think, I really liked what we've done, which is just saying, hey, there's somebody who has intel, and we voted them in to have a piece of this conversation, and it's served us well.
Yeah, so.
I think we all agree.
We all agree, and so I think what we'll do is, I think you're going to amend the motion to have public comment, period, right? Versus is there a motion to accept this with that one change?
Yeah, so I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 1150 with amending the public comment period to the beginning of the meeting instead of the end.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moving to second, Katie, okay. I think this is a completely different scenario than what we've been talking about.
Yes.
And I think being silent on it maybe, it happens so very rarely, again.
But it's very valuable.
It's very valuable. And again, this council, and under normal circumstances with a majority vote, can suspend the rules and do that. So I don't think we need a necessary, a policy on that, but I do think it's very valuable to add public comment at every meeting that we're at. And so that's where I'm going to stick with my vote. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor of the amended amendment on Resolution 1150 signify it by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that amended resolution passes.
In that case, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 1151, which is to update the Advisory Board Handbook with our new public comment practice.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify it by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Resolution 1154, the electric vehicle charging rate.
It's good to be here. Tonight in front of you, we have Resolution 1154, which is electronic vehicle charging fees. As you currently are aware, the City of Lacey is currently upgrading its, oops, went too far. The City of Lacey is currently upgrading its chargers at City Hall while expanding our EV charging station footprint across several locations throughout the city, which includes the library, the Willing Creek Community Center, and the rack. Now, we are installing two different types of chargers. The first one is the Level 2 charger, which is a slower of the two. It takes about 20 miles per charge, per hour, so it can take anywhere from four to 12 hours to charge a vehicle. There'll be two chargers at City Hall, they are dual-port, so they can handle two vehicles at once. Then we'll be adding one at the community center and one at the library. Now, the faster one is the DC Fast Charger, or also known as the Level 3 Charger. There'll be six at the Rack Expansion Parking Lot, and there'll be one at City Hall and one at the community center. And they can charge a vehicle to 80% within an hour, or less than an hour. It all depends on the vehicle, of course. So in the May work session at the end of the month, council was presented with four options. Option one was free, and it ranged all the way up to market rate, and council chose option number three. So option three is where the city is going to charge a fee. Level 2 will be 19 cents per kilowatt, and the DC Fast will be 35 cents. And in that, it will cover the cost of PSE, any charge point transaction fees, and replacement of the actual charges themselves. The lifespan of the chargers is about 10 years. It takes, the cost to the customer for a Level 2 charge will be about $8, and a DC Fast is about $19.5 per session. Now, the most important thing taken from the work session is council did want an overstate policy of 40 cents per minute with a 15-minute grace period. And that, and so therefore, that, what that means is the owner, once the charging session is complete, they'll be notified that their vehicle is ready to, is stopped, and that they have 15 minutes to move the vehicle. So basically, how that will look is once, let's kind of back up first. So what will happen is, once we go live with these stations, they can either use the ChargePoint app or the third-party app, and that will tell them all of our pricing schedule, it will tell them if there's an overstate policy, it will tell them what type of charger they are on, or they have selected to use, and it will also tell them the location and the availability, and if it's down for maintenance. So the app is actually pretty useful. Once they do connect the vehicle to the station, it actually gives them real-time data through their phone. So it'll tell them, if you want, they can look at any time to see how much their battery percentage is at, how much that current session is currently being charged. And throughout the process, once it hits 80%, it will send them a notification that you are nearing the end of your session, and that it will reinstate what the overstate policy is. And then as they continue to move towards the session being completed, it will also tell them that you are now being charged 40 cents for the overstate. So it'll notify them in real time. So they should be aware of that. Now, it was also brought up about enforcement. RCW 4608185, Section 2, says that if a vehicle is not connected to the station, and it's just being used as a regular parking space, that there is a monetary fine of $124, I believe. So that just means if anyone parks there for any reason and not charging, they will be subjected to an infraction. And the next thing is, staff recommends that council passes Resolution 1154, which sets the Level 2 at 19 cents, this DC Fast at 35 cents, with an overstate penalty of 40 cents per minute with a 15-minute grace period. Once that is done, I will go ahead and upload that policy to the ChargePoint dashboard, and after that, I will go ahead and start with the Rack chargers first, as they should be complete hopefully in the next week or two, and then we'll do testing probably that next week to make sure everything's correct. And then the last set is the City Hall, Community Center, and the library, and that should hopefully be done by winter of 2024. And once that is done, we'll test those as well, and then we'll go live to the public. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, I have some questions.
Okay.
I've been, I know I was sort of a lone member who was sort of critical of some of this, but I kind of want to reiterate why. The first reason why I've been somewhat critical of having this cost be more than our costs, whatever our cost is for electricity, and the transaction fee that we have to, you know, recover, is because these charging stations have already been bought by the public, right? The federal government, we got a grant from the federal government, and they purchased this, so the people have already bought these charging stations. That's one issue. The second issue is, we're using today's dollars for replacement costs. I'm pretty sure, within 10 years, there's no, there's no such thing as a Level 2 station. They just won't exist. So we're going to be collecting up to $9,800 for a, for something that won't exist in the future, number one. And also, what we're, what I've seen since I've had electric vehicle for, since, for a long time, since 2013, so for over a decade now, is that these costs have gone down, down, down for these chargers. They used to be, for a Level 2 charger, it was a lot more expensive. It's probably dropped in half from when I first looked at it. And so we don't know what, what the future is going to hold when it comes to this. So we're going to be collecting dollars for, for something we don't know how much it's going to cost, that's already been paid for by the public. And, and also, the PSE is about ready to implement a different rate charging, where if it's off-peak hours, the electricity is going to be less expensive. And so shouldn't that be, also be reflective if we're, if all of a sudden the customer is not going to have to pay as much at night, why would we still be charging the full amount here on this policy? So those are my three major issues I have with sort of setting a direct, this is what we're going to charge for this station, and what we're, this is what we're going to charge for this station, because there's way too many unknowns for me to be able to pass, to be in favor of this policy. Councilmember?
So, I mean, I disagree with you, and the reasons, a couple of things. One, we can adjust the rate if, in fact, prices change from, from the power company. So we always have the ability, as you said earlier, this council can change anything we've ruled, you know, we've made a decision on, we can go back and change it if they were to change. I think it's fiscally irresponsible, though, not to collect enough for the replacement, because at some point, these do have a shelf life, right? They're only going to work for so long. Granted, we don't know the cost in the future, but that's true of everything we do. We put money away on every vehicle that we buy as a city, we budget for replacement of that vehicle, not knowing what that vehicle is going to cost at the time of replacement, because it's an unknown. It's always going to be an unknown, it's a future, you know, a future thing. But it would be irresponsible to expect the public, all of the public, to pay for these next stations when they have to be replaced. Shouldn't, why would the user not be the one to pay for that? And I think the only way they pay for it is by adding it, by having it in the fee, so that we're collecting enough for these replacements.
Well, they didn't have to pay for it the first time around. Councilmember?
It was paid for with tax dollars.
Well, sure.
Well, and that's what's going to be paid for again, but by then, and why would they not pay? That was because we got a grant from the federal government, I understand what you're saying.
And we could get a grant from the federal government to replace the next.
But you don't know that. There's no way you know the future, none of us do.
And I largely agree with Councilmember Greenstein. We got grants for this, we don't know that grants are going to be available in the future for that. And I think, as he said, replacing and updating these stations is going to be a drain on our city budget if we don't have that income. So I think it is the smart thing to do.
Councilmember Stebbin?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with both of you 100%, but what I would say about the current rate that we might be charging, depending on this vote, or if there's even a motion, we could add to our inventory of chargers regardless of future grants or whatever. So something to think about, but I agree with both of you 100%.
Well, then that will need a change, we need a change in the language. See, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with collecting dollars that we had more stations with, but if we are only collecting dollars for these stations alone, that's where I have, that's where I have an issue with.
I don't, I don't think the dollars were ever really intended for just these stations. At least I had hoped that they weren't, because it was, what you're saying is like, okay, if they're cheaper in the future, then, you know, we're collecting double, then we have the capacity to add five, six more stations, and that would be fantastic.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
But that only works if they happen to be cheaper in the future. We, again, don't know that.
Right, we don't know that.
So, I mean, this replacement.
We could at least replace the ones we have.
Yeah, but I mean, we can't, I would not be supportive of adding more, using the money from this that's collected to add more until we were doing the replacement. If there was enough money left to add more, great, but in the interim, we can't add more using the money we're collecting for the replacement of these.
Replace these first, and if there's extra money, we get more.
That's fine, I have no issue with that.
But, but also, not just in these locations, we can put future ones in different areas of the city that don't have charging stations.
Yeah, well, but, you know, I did have one thought that I wanted to share. Which is, if, if we are, you know, going to charge an amount a little bit over our recovery amount, and, and their base rate drops, maybe we should be doing a percentage as opposed to a flat rate in these circumstances and situations. So if Puget Sound Energy's rate drops, maybe we are supposed, maybe we should be in step with that, a penny above it. Somehow, we need to be on a sliding scale with PSE so that we don't end up overcharging our residents.
I can tell you, within the program itself, like what the mayor mentioned earlier, that PSE is going to have different prices for different times, we can set that into it. So we can say from like 12 to 6, PSE charges this amount, we can incorporate that into the pricing schedule, and then from 601 to.
I'd feel better about that, for sure.
So we have many options that we can customize it to.
But currently, PSE charges the same 24/7, right? There's no difference in charges currently.
Yeah, not yet, but that's about.
Well, that's fine. I mean, once they do it, then I have no problem. I would be fully supportive of that. I'm not looking to overcharge people. I just want full recovery. And I think full recovery means we have to charge the full rate, plus the fee, plus the replacement cost over the life of the equipment.
So does that mean we need to do a little bit of a language change so that we can?
Yeah. Say, Mayor, Andrew?
There is flexibility built into the resolution to authorize a city manager position to adjust their energy rates according to the market, what PSE charges. And for any other rate changes that, for any other reasons, would be brought back to the city council.
And that's already there.
That's already in that flexibility. So that way, as PSE rates change and those functions, it's in the resolution. That way, you can adjust to those rates quickly without having to go back and do a formal action. But if we change rates for any other reason, for instance, replacement costs change, and we bring that back to council for review.
In that case, I'm going to go ahead and put a motion on the table. I would move to approve Resolution Number 1154, approving the electrical vehicle charging fees.
I would second. It's been moved and seconded, now off some discussion.
I have a question. Would the same money generated from this also be used for maintenance and repairs? And potential vandalism?
Currently, we have a five-year maintenance contract. So the first five years should be maintenance-free. Vandalism, I don't know what's covered in it. But I know that the hoses cost about, or the cords and wires cost about 500 bucks.
And every once in a while, someone will come and snip one just because they're being idiot. But, yeah. But I guess, as in all of our policies, I guess I'd feel a little more comfortable, too, if there was like a check-in period, say, this is how much money we've been bringing in. Then, you know, take a look at the policies. As long as we have maybe a check-in, maybe it's that five-year period when we're hitting the warranty, that we have a check-in before then, just to see if we're on the right, to see if there's a Level 2 charger that still exists at that point. Do we have to change something to a check-in at five years? Or?
That'd be policy.
I think that can be part of policy that the council would like. We could set that up in the program. It doesn't have to be official change to the resolution.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor of adopting Resolution 1154, the electric vehicle charging rates? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'll say nay, but the motion still passes.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up is Resolution 1155, the Home Consortium Interlocal Agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the 2025 to 2027 Home Interlocal Agreement. We first spoke about this item on July 23 at the work session. And we have a resolution before you tonight, 1155, authorizing the City of Lacey to enter into an interlocal cooperative agreement, ILA, with Thurston County and the City of Olympia to form a home consortium to participate and receive funds under the National Affordable Housing Act, NHA. So we talked on the 23rd really briefly about what is home funding. Home is a federal program administered by HUD. The eligible activities include building, buying, and/or rehabbing affordable housing for rent, building homes for low-income households to purchase, down payment assistance to low-income households while purchasing a home, and tenant-based rental assistance to low-income households. Currently, Thurston County does not use home funds for this purpose. So again, the Home ILA, the interlocal agreement attachment 2, would continually see its continued participation in the home consortium as a standalone member, now as an entitlement community, and make us a signatory in the same manner as Olympia. So future planning and coordination of home funds is accomplished by the home committee within the Regional Housing Council. The new ILA assures home projects can continue being funded in Lacey and is similar to the existing ILA. And we would like to submit this interlocal agreement to Thurston County tomorrow, if it's approved tonight.
I would move that we approve Resolution 1155, authorizing the City of Lacey to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement, ILA, with Thurston County and the City of Olympia to form a home consortium to participate and receive funds under the National Affordable Housing Act.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seems like a no-brainer. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now, we're on to the Parks Improvement Funding Work Group. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, before the council are two separate actions. One is a motion to approve Resolution 1,156, which would amend Resolution 1,148. That was establishing the Parks Improvement Funding Work Group. And then the second action is a motion to appoint the applicants as recommended by the council subcommittee. Just real quick, for a little bit of background, the city council has been working on developing a strategy for funding the Parks Capital Improvement Program. And part of that strategy is to form, decided to form a Parks Capital Improvement Funding Work Group, excuse me. And the purpose of this work group would be to further prioritize the list of projects, review all available funding sources, and recommend to the city council funding options the council should consider to implement that Parks Capital Improvement Program. At the June 4, 2024 council meeting, the city council adopted Resolution 1,148, establishing that Parks Improvement, or Parks Funding Improvement Work Group. And as part of that, set some parameters of the size of the group, of being at least seven, or between seven and 13 members, and looking to seek a representation of a broad diversity throughout the community, and have broad diverse backgrounds with related to parks and recreational activities. As also part of that framework was to have at least seven of those appointed members being voting members, meaning that they are either a city resident or UGA resident, and are not a member of any one of the councils or advisory boards. And then up to, the remainder of the work group could be non-voting members, which would be that they would either be non-resident of the city, or the UGA, or also a member of one of the parks, or, excuse me, the councils or advisory boards. So, and also to review the applications and ultimately make recommendation, council also with the adoption of that resolution, formed a council committee. And this committee was made up of Councilmember Greenstein, Councilmember Vasquez, and Councilmember Dunning, who were charged to review the applications, and if needed, conduct interviews, and to ultimately make a recommendation to the council. Let's, right after, on June 5, the city initially conducted outreach and promoted the opportunity for community members to participate on this work group. That application period is open for approximately 30 days. Upon closure, the city received 47 applications. So there's a lot of interest to be a part of this process, and created a nice group of individuals for the committee to work through. And ultimately, they are looking to make that recommendation tonight. And at this point, I will turn it over to Councilmember Greenstein to talk about, lead the conversation from the committee to what they reviewed, what they're looking at in terms of amendment to the resolution, as well as the members that they are recommending for appointment. And as for background, too, all the applications for the members being recommended are part of the council packets as well.
Thanks, Rick. Yeah, so myself, Nick, and Robin met several times to discuss this, and conducted interviews with several of the candidates. What we did is, we took all of the 47 applicants, and took those who we all three agreed on. Those were the no brainers, right? We just, we appointed, we put them on the list. We then appointed those that who, at least two of us agreed on. And then we interviewed everyone that one of us had on the list, that where there wasn't overlap, to come up with the rest of it. The end result was, we are proposing today to increase that from 13 to 15 total people. Still only nine voting members. It's just a couple of additional people who we thought brought a lot to the table, but would be non-voting members. So that's really, I think, that is the only change, as far as, that's the only amendment from Resolution 1148 to 1156.
Correct. Is they increase the size of the membership to 15?
Increase the size to 15, if everyone's okay with that. And then, as far as the actual members, which will be a separate vote, I believe you have, everyone should have, like Rick said, all the applications are there. I think we've put together what I would consider a really good, strong group. It's very diverse. It comes from all over the city. You know, very diverse as far as backgrounds, and where people are coming from, and why they wanted to be on the committee. I think we've got a really good group here. Nick, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I was, the only thing I would add is really that the reason why we went up to 15 is because there was a couple of non-voting members who just had brought a lot to the table, one from North Thurston Public Schools, one from an area of Lacey that wasn't represented at all. And so we really thought it was important to have those voices. But we didn't want to sacrifice voting members in order to do that. And so really, this group, and we're all pretty excited about the group of people that we chose, and how much experience and diversity and background that these people have.
We found it pretty easy. I mean, you know, you would think with that many applicants, it might have been more difficult. But we pretty quickly came to agreement on who we thought should be on here. And we think we got a really good mix.
Great. Well, first, I want to say thank you to the three-member council who did all this work. I am, I'm really happy that you guys took this on. You know, I thought this was something I was going to have to get into, but I'm really happy that you guys did this. And it looks like you have a group of great people. So with that, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 1156 first?
Sure, I would move to adopt Resolution 1156, amending Resolution 1148.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries. We adopted Resolution 1156.
I would then make a motion to appoint the 15 members of the Parks Improvement Funding Work Group that have been presented before you.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Stebbin?
All right, there's something that didn't sit well with me, and I understand, committee, trust me. Some people can't, you know, there's not enough room for everybody. You even expanded it. But it's brought to my attention that there's a committee member for the city that's, you know, was on the Parks Board before, and, you know, they brought up the point that there's another past committee member whose wife is one of the selections. And I agree with it 100%. Sherry's awesome. I'm not going to say any other names, but it's not a perfect science. It just didn't sit well with me that somebody that's given so much time to the city in those 47 applications didn't get selected. And so I just have to say it, or else it won't feel right. So nothing negative to you guys. I know, again, it's not a perfect science. So I just had to say something.
And I can touch on that, Mike. We really tried to just focus on the applications that were presented. You know, there wasn't a whole lot of information. So really, when it came down to it, it was strictly just based on the applications, and not really a lot of background beyond that. And so there wasn't really a lot of factoring in, those sort of things that we just wouldn't even know in a lot of those cases.
Again, it's, you know, I'm not trying to beat anybody up or anything like that. And it's, you know, you even expanded the board. And I trust your guys' judgment 100%. I just had to say something, or else I wouldn't feel right.
I'm for your comment.
That's it.
Okay.
Just add one thing. The only thing I would add is that they were all great applicants. And I think that it's important that we keep those applications, those that aren't on this, because there's always going to be future things where we need participation. The fact that we got 47 applicants for something that I know in some of our early discussions, we weren't sure we would get five, right? You and I had had that conversation. We didn't know if we would get the community involvement. So to have 47 applicants or something like this, and they're committing a great deal of time. I mean, we're talking about two meetings a month for a six-month period about?
Yes.
So, I mean, they're committing some serious time. So to have that many people in our community that are willing to give back to our community, I think is a testament to how great a place Lacey is. And all of these people, we should keep on, keep their applications for future things, where we're going to need public support and input.
And again, really quick, guys, if you guys don't take it as an insult or a negative in any way, this is just me as a person. So if something doesn't sit right with me, I have to say something. But again, 100% agree with the determinations that you guys made in your recommendations.
Well, thank you. I know how difficult it is to do this. That's why I'm so thankful for the work group to put the time in and make the hard decisions, because I know it's not easy. And so, you know, thank you again to you guys. I know you have a good selection. And I am very proud of how many people applied for this. I mean, like I said, I was worried we're going to open this up and maybe only get a couple people, and it's the same people that always try to participate. And that's not how we come to a good decision with something as important as the future of our city, and one of the biggest assets we have, which is our parks, and how we can continue to fund it and expand it, and definitely develop the undeveloped parks as well. I mean, that's so critical for us. So I appreciate it. There's been a motion, a second, to approve the appointments from the working, the Parks Improvement Funding Work Group. Motion, a second, yes?
So shout out to the Assistant City Manager's Office, who has really stepped up and got our marketing out there, our footprint out, our digital footprint out there is so good that we are reaching further than we've ever reached and getting more attention in applicants than we've ever gotten. So thank you.
Yeah, and the Parks Culture and Recreation whole department, actually, as well. This is really based on the back of a lot of work that we had already put in with Greg Cuyo Park and all that outreach. And again, you know, I want to thank, you know, the members like Ruth Weigelt, who was there the last time we got together as a city and tried to, you know, pass a metropolitan parks district, and we had the community come out and be supportive. And, you know, this has been a long time. Last time, this council made a decision to do something big, right? We maybe went a little too quick, you know? But hopefully, with the work of this group, that's going to come back with some solid recommendations that they're going to give us a good plan that we can all support. And so that's what I really look forward to at the end of the day. Okay, motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. And, yes, this is a great step forward. And it was really testament to all the applications that we did receive. And again, this is the beginning of the process, and there's going to be a lot of work going forward with this group. And they have been identifying what that potential schedule will look like, and we'll be continuing to work with them on scheduling up those dates. At this time, I just wanted to call on Jen Burby, our Parks Director, Parks Culture and Recreation Director, just to touch upon what that schedule is looking like and the focus. And also, before I, kind of following up everybody else's comments, there's been a lot of good work by Jen's team and Shannon's team, as well as others that put together the schedule and do all this coordination to create this work group going forward. the schedule and do all this coordination to create this work group going forward. So, Jen, would you?
Thank you. Good evening, Council and Mayor. And I just wanted to quickly acknowledge the members that were just approved that are here. So, I don't know if you want to everyone stand up, or?
Yeah. Want, want to?
Come to the podium, or?
Go ahead, just.
Except you.
You can just go ahead and introduce them from right there.
Well, I haven't met all of them.
Okay.
I know Ruth. So, I was hoping maybe the ones that are here could just go to the podium really quickly.
Do you want to come with the podium and just introduce yourself real quick? Sure. You can all come to the podium. Come on. Come on.
And I'm happy to be on this. This is, like, yeah, Lacey's good at this.
Thank you.
Hi, nice to meet you. I'm Rachel Morata. I'm excited to, to get to help out.
Thank you.
Ruth Weigelt, and I'm very happy to be appointed to this work group and look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Thank you for all you do. She's amazing.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for coming tonight, so, nice to meet you. Yeah, so, City Manager asked me to provide just a quick overview of how the schedule is shaping up. So, we're kicking off here in two weeks. August 19th will be the first meeting. The meetings will be two Mondays a month at 5:30 PM, and they will go through November 18th at this point, with the intention to bring recommendations to the council in early December. And it'll be everything from training and overview on down to diving into that Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan and the challenges and opportunities that are mentioned in that plan, all the public outreach that's been done to get to the Parks Capital Improvement Program that exists from that input. We'll be covering the current maintenance program and, you know, discussing the impact that any improvements have on maintenance and operations and the challenges and opportunities associated with that. And then, down into September, we'll be looking at funding. So, we're reviewing current parks funding, looking at potential funding sources, and then education about capital projects and the design process and some of the costs associated with that. Then on to, into late October, honing in really on the priorities and the preferred funding of the group, and a lot of discussions around that culminating into, you know, finalization there towards the end of November of the recommendations. So, all the meetings will be public, they'll be posted on the website, and no different than other boards and commissions of this council, so they'll be nice for public to be able to access. And, yeah, with that, just really want to thank council for their support and focus on this work group.
Thank you, Jen. So, as you see, there's a, a lot of work ahead of us, and we're excited for the outcome of this work and the recommendations that will come out of this group. As the council said, there's a really good diverse and enthusiasm and diversity of backgrounds and enthusiasm to be able to bring lens to solving this financial puzzle for the city of Lacey, so, thank you.
Well, that will go right to the City Manager's Report, so we can keep talking.
So, yes, on the City Manager's Report, I have a, two items. One, the first item is a, a, to award a contract for the Yum-Ham Highway Pavement Rehab and Citywide Utility Adjustments, and so, I'm going to turn it over to our Public Works Director, Scott Agar, to provide an overview.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, staff recommends award of Project PW 2024-18 to Lakeside Industries in the amount of $1,420,261. The engineer's estimate was 1.51 million. There are four bidders on the contract, forty-five working days allowed, and we expect the work to begin in September. So, the project, as you can see on the map, extends over a half-mile from the intersection of Ruddle Road and Yum Highway to the intersection of Yum Highway and Bayou Street. The project includes both grind overlay work, but it also includes full-depth roadway reconstruction. So, the grind overlay portion of the work is about a two-and-a-half-inch-deep grind and then an overlay with fiber-reinforced asphalt. The full-depth reconstruction will be six inches of asphalt placed on top of eight inches of a compacted rock base. So, the scope also has a few other things. Since we're tearing up the road, we have to go back and re-stripe it, and then there's also utility adjustments involved with any overlay or road reconstruction project. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Can I get a motion, please?
I would make a motion to move, move to award Lacey Contract Number PW 2024-18 to low bidder Lakeside Industries in Lacey, Washington, in the amount of $1,420,261.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay. Councilmember Stedman, then I'll go to Councilmember Greenstein.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things underestimated, engineer's estimate, estimate, it was under it. Hard to get out sometimes. And second thing is City of Lacey. You know, they're from, they're, the contractors from Lacey, so it's awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Greenstein.
Yeah, Scott, can you talk a little bit? So, there's two, there's the part that's being a full, full depth and the other part that's the overlay. Can you tell me about which areas are which on the?
Yeah, the grind overlay, starting at the intersection of Ruddle and Yum Highway, runs south, then down around the curve. As soon as you get around the curve, if you're familiar with that part of the roadway, the westbound or the north side of the road is in really poor shape. So, that's the portion that's going to be the full-depth reconstruction, the, kind of the south, it's about a three-lane section there. So, the south or the, the eastbound will be the grind overlay, pretty much all the way up to Bayou Straight. Does that, is that clear?
Yep, perfectly. Thank you.
You bet.
Is there any other discussion?
Just real quick, so, the, the, the curve there, right? It, it doesn't, it doesn't look that bad. I mean, it feels pretty sticky, and it doesn't, it doesn't look like, I mean, when was the last time that road was done?
That's a good question. The north-south section was done more recently than the east-west section. There is a portion right in that curve that's, you know, we're not going to touch. But typically, when we go into an area, you know, you don't, I mean, even if something's 10 years old, if there's a small section of it, you don't want to replace it with brand-new and then have this piece that's 10 years old, because then you're going to have to come back, you know, before the rest is aged and take care of that as well.
Guys, so you got to go ahead and do the whole thing. I got you.
And there is a pavement deterioration curve, it's kind of the waterfall effect. It looks good for a real long time, and then it ages very, very fast, kind of like me.
Is there anything, any other discussion? Then it's moved, been moved and seconded to award this Lacey contract to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. And next up?
Yes, I'd like to invite up Chief Almada, he's here tonight to provide a, the annual Police Department Report and activities with community events. Chief?
Good evening, Council, good evening, Mayor. Thank you for having me. I have an information item for you this evening, and I thank you for adjusting the council meeting today for Tom Dayton National Night Out. Thank you, directors, for spending a little hour with me, and thank you if the council members came out for that as well. I have a limited slideshow, only 12 slides, so we will make sure your time is valuable and handled accordingly. Readers, okay. This will be your summary report. So, for Lacey, just out of glance, we are the only accredited police agency in Thurston County. We have been accredited since 1995, and we are presently accredited, reaccredited this year. We have 72 funded commissions. It may say 74. Oh, could we corrected it? We have 72 funded commission FTEs for officers and 18.5 civilian FTEs, which means currently we have eight officers in the field training program, which is wonderful, and it should all be done with training by the end of this year or thereabouts. And we have three folks in the academy. We're on schedule, as I said, to complete most of the training by 2024, and they will all be field-ready by that time. We have four commission officer vacancies at this time with two candidates and backgrounds, and we have one civilian opening that's still vacant. And we continue to have a very diverse workforce as to gender, race, and ethnicity, age, life experience, military experience, and education. So, we're very proud of that. And we are on pace to meet our 2024 patrol staffing goals by the end of this year. The School Resource Program will be fully staffed with three full-time school resource officers this school year, which begins in just a few weeks, which is exciting for all of us parents, I'm sure. And we are on pace to be able to restaff our two officer traffic unit in the first quarter of next year. It's reactive, too. Cool. Community engagement this summer, we've been quite busy, as you can tell. We had the Fun Fair, we had Coffee with a Cop at Hox Perry, Cutters Point. We had the Juneteenth Celebration. We had school visits at Children's Courtyard. We had a safety talk at Jubilee, that was very well received. We've had multiple housing safety meetings. We've had the school's visit at Kinder Care. We were at the barbecue festival. It was quite warm, but it was good. And we have, of course, Cops Cars and Kids was, was a fantastic event this past couple of weeks. We had over 3,000 folks in attendance at that event, had over 100 car entries. There's a little bit of controversy that one car won five awards, but it was a crowd favorite, what can I tell you? We had over 1,300 Home Depot build kits completed by the kids. It was like Santa's workshop, all the pounding going on over there. It was very cool. And we gave away approximately 1,200 free snow cones. A total, and we couldn't even tell you how much free popcorn we gave away. There was that much given away, so it was pretty exciting. And we had law enforcement demonstrations and interactions. Tonight, of course, as we discussed, we had National Night Out. Also, upcoming events include the YMCA Power Scholar Meet and Greet, which is tomorrow. That, oh, Ruth just left. Oh, shucks, because she'll be part of that as well. August, we also have the Capital City Golf Club HOA Open House. We have Dry Tykes and Wet Wipes Stuff the Bus Event coming up September. And we also have Children's Day in October, and the Community Academy, which we put off, we put on each fall, is scheduled for the, every Wednesday in October and the first Wednesday in November, with a range EVOC, which is Emergency Vehicle Operations in October. So, if anyone's interested in participating in that in the public, please apply. We have a few openings left. So, as I say, Lacey Police Department is committed to good data and transparency. This is just really a sticking point for me, I have to tell you. We're only as good as our data, and we really concentrate on making sure we have good data. Lacey Police Department responds to all requests for service, and we pride ourselves in documenting all reported crimes in our jurisdiction. We also review, we review our data at multiple levels to ensure it's accurate, complete, and appropriately categorized. Many agencies are like the Lacey Police Department, but I must tell you, some are not. They're constrained by resources, they don't respond to all service requests due to that lack of resources or for different agency priorities. With that being said, another jurisdiction may choose, may choose not to document an incident as a crime for a number of reasons, such as scarcity of resources, a lack of victim willing to prosecute, or other agency priorities. But, as I said, Lacey, we can't, we document all of our crime. With that being said, I'd like to review our crime stats for 2023 that I discussed earlier in the year with you, but I can confirm now as being finalized, as finalized as they get, because they do, they do adjust at times as different information comes in, but this will be a pretty good judgment of how we're doing. So, talking about different types of crimes, these are the different categories. Crimes against persons, it says the litany of crimes there. Crimes against property, again, list of crimes there, and then a subgrouping of violent crimes, which are especially called out as murder, forcible, sexual offenses, robbery, and aggravated assault. Kind of ran out of myself there. Okay. So, moving on, so this is overall crime occurring in 2023. In the state, there's an average of 62 crimes for every thousand of the population. So, by using crime rate, that's how we can compare apples to apples, by doing the rate. So, this is actually not actual numbers of crimes, but a crime rate, maybe, so that's, you compare based on the population. Okay, so you look at Lacey, which is circled, is 56 crimes per thousand members of the popu, of our, our community population. In the state, the state average is 62 crimes for that same population. You'll notice other jurisdictions that are comparators to ours, they are, for the most part, significantly higher. Says a lot for the way we do business here. Again, not all jurisdictions capture all their crime. With that even being said, we do, and we're still compare so well. Yes, it's me bragging a little bit. Okay. This is the violent crime rate, as I spoke, crimes against persons, or, sorry, subgroup violent, again, 2.5 crimes per thousand of the population. You'll notice other jurisdictions are very much higher. So, the majority of our crime tends to be crimes, property-type crimes. Fortunately, we do have some violent crime, we do have some crimes against persons, but we generally do pretty well. Again, this is crimes against person, that's a larger category we're discussing, again, below the state average and very well, compare very well to our other jurisdictions. Property crime rates, again, very much below the, well, below the state average and also compare very well to our other jurisdictions, and in some cases, in order of magnitude less than other jurisdictions in our comparison group. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Just want to, oh, Councilmember Stedman?
Thanks, Mayor. I, I just want to say you have every right to brag, Chief. You have a tremendous workforce behind you, and they do their job with compassion and care, and most of all, everyone's safety. So, brag away. You know, you're really just telling the community, re- fortifying just how good of a job that our well-trained officers are doing.
I just want to obviously say, you know, thank you to the Lacey Police Department and all the civilian workers, everyone that goes into making sure we have a, a safe community. It's sort of a, you know, it's a team effort, and it, and it really shows. I think one thing is, you know, the fact that we've been accredited for such a long time, and that holds us to such a high standard. It's why, you know, there's other, other jurisdictions don't do it for multiple reasons, but one is, it's like you have to be held to a really high standard to do it, too. And the fact that we are, I think it, you know, it, it shows in our community. I, I do also want to say, you know, there's, I, every once in a while, I'll get this, oh, jeez, crime is on the rise, and there's much more crime. Well, you know, that's why good data is, is really important. And we're no longer this little city that we used to be either. I mean, I remember, you know, back when our population was like under 15,000 here in the city of Lacey, and, you know, that was a different life ago. But the fact that we've grown so much as a community and our crime rate has still been continued to be low state average and against really all of our comparables, for the most part, with similar, you know, like-sized cities, population-wise, it really goes to show you how well and how safe we, we are here as a community, and that we have neighbors looking out for neighbors, and we have, you know, we're, that, it, it takes all of us to have a safe community. It's, you can't just expect our police to make our community safe, right? It takes all of us to make our community safe, and we have, we have that buy-in from, from everyone here at, at City Hall, you know, the Public Works people, the, everyone is putting in to make this community, just an amazing community, and we're all very proud of it. Councilmember?
I would, I would just echo what you're saying, and earlier this evening, I was at two different National Night Out events, and at both events, I heard from people how much they love and appreciate Lacey's Police Department. So, that's in no small measure due to you guys.
Yeah.
But they were, I mean, one woman was just effusive in her praise at how wonderful you all are, how, how kind, how easy to deal with, and all, so.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you very much. I also want to recognize Deputy Chief Hollis, who is in the room with us today. Definitely a big part of this whole operational plan, our strategic planning for operations, so I appreciate all the work he's doing. And again, when I brag, I brag about my folks, because they are doing the work, so I really appreciate all they do, and I really appreciate the support of council, as a big, big factor in being able to attract quality talent to this organization, so thank you.
And we're all looking forward to the new police department and the training center, where we can keep up on the best training that we can possibly have, so.
Thank you, sir.
Looking forward to that as well. Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. And Deputy.
Thank you, Chief DC.
Anything else?
Nothing further.
Okay, then we'll go on to Boards, Commission, and Committee Reports. I don't have a report. August is one of those months where a lot of stuff is taken off. We don't, a lot of our committees are, don't meet in August, so I don't have a report. Deputy Mayor?
I do not have a report.
Councilmember Greenstein?
I do not have a report.
Councilmember Stedman?
No report.
Councilmember Cox?
Well, of course, I, but I only have one.
Okay.
One report. Regional Housing Council met on July 24th. We, we talked about a thing called the Black Home Initiative. We saw some kind of sobering statistics, such as 42% of black families have like zero wealth to contribute to buying a home, and blacks have the lowest rate of homeownership of any racial group in Thurston County. I'm sure the Deputy Mayor can attest to some of that. This Black Home Initiative was started in 2021 in King, Pierce, and South Snohomish Counties. It's a small group that includes Realtors and two banks, and they've been, well, locally, there's been a small group, including a Realtor and two banks, meeting since April here. a small group, including a Realtor and two banks, meeting since April here. We can sign on as the Housing Council and/or as a jurisdiction. And they are asking the jurisdictions to join this. We're told there's no cost to enroll and we aren't being asked to commit staff resources. However, depending on, you know, what programs might come up to try to help with the situation, there could be a request for staff time. So I have documents I can forward to the City Manager to review and then bring back to council.
Please do that.
Future meeting.
Please do that.
We also reviewed a compilation of incentives for housing development in the cities of Lacy, Olympia, Tombwater, and Yelm, as well as unincorporated Thurston County. It looks at things like tax breaks, fee waivers, that sort of thing, and how each jurisdiction aligns with that. Lacy looked pretty darn good in the in the list there. We approved a plan to provide financial support to manufactured home communities that want to buy their parks. There were several different models that we could go with from anywhere from throwing the whole bucket of enterprise money that we might have at a single park. And we decided, no, we want to, you know, be able to help multiple parks and not just put all our eggs in one basket. We're also looking to have a retreat in September that will be largely devoted to the Housing Council's role in policymaking. When we first formed this council, we had the intent to share new policy initiatives, such as Lacy's Accessory Dwelling Unit Program, with the other jurisdictions to, you know, help avoid duplication of efforts instead of working in our little silos. That effort kind of got derailed because the homeless situation just mushroomed. And so we've been in reactive mode about that. So we're looking to try to resurrect that. And council members also have an interest in having some housing policies align among the participating jurisdictions where it makes sense to do so. This, I think, would help with, you know, developers who want to do low-income housing projects, not having to navigate five different sets of regulations and policies and stuff. There may also be some discussion about involving the Housing Council to become its own entity with an executive director and support staff. It's very early days about that. But I think we'd all like to take some of the pressure off city and county staff members who've been serving as the technical team and doing the legwork of of this. So I think there was a little resistance to it. And so I don't know how far we'll get at this retreat, but...
Well, I hope that is the outcome because when we were all talking at the beginning of this process, we said it, how important it was going to be for the Regional Housing Council to be independent, right? And so that is what we were all told was gonna happen. So I know these things take time, but I do hope that that happens, that we get to a point where the Regional Housing Council, sooner than later, is an independent operating body. Number one. Number two, on the policy side of things, I think it's a, of course, a good place to discuss policy, but the each individual jurisdiction has its own policies, right? And so are gonna, you know, I think there's a good place to share those policies and, you know, see where there can be some agreement. But obviously, each jurisdiction's gonna have their own.
Of course, and that's understood. And in terms of becoming an semi-independent entity, it's just there are so many factors to consider, like right now. And we'll continue to be, county will continue to be the fiscal agent for state and federal funds that are that come into our community. So, you know, we've got to figure out how we work with that, whether county staff becomes the executive director and support staff. There's just so many factors to consider there. So, but well, I'll definitely take that input back and we'll see.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dunning?
I have nothing to report.
Well, with that, we have been reached the end of our agenda. Thank you all for staying with us this late. Again, thank you for everyone who participated in National Night Out. Thank you to all the work group members. I know you guys have some a lot of heavy lifting to do, but we have full confidence in you coming back with a good recommendation to this council. So without objection, I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacy.
Good night, everybody.